Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay there. Just had a last minute message from someone who didn't realize we are on Zoom tonight and not in person. So just responding to that. So good evening. This is the public meeting of the Board of Education. We'd like to begin by acknowledging and thanking the First Peoples of the Hunkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. We're going to begin tonight with some announcements, and I believe trustee Larson has an announcement to start us off.
I do.
Trustee Larson, do you have a video?
I hit, sorry.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
I have an announcement with regards to Assistant Superintendent Archer retiring. And I would like to add that I'm happy we're at Zoom because normally she would be sitting behind me. And this way I get to speak to her. Almost after almost 10 years with the Richmond School District and over 30 years in public education, Assistant Superintendent Lynn Archer will be retiring at the end of this week. Lynn joined our district in 2013 after having been a school and district administrator in the Burnaby School District and a teacher in the Surrey School District. Lynn has been a driving force on innovation and inquiry in our district and has made significant contributions to the district's framework for enhancing learning, including our district story and our school stories. She has also been instrumental in the development and implementation of our Innovation Inquiry Grant Initiative. Her legacy of over 400 teachers in our schools participating in these grant opportunities will continue to positively impact our district for years to come. Lynn has also provided leadership in other areas that support innovation, such as the Learning Environment Pilot Grants, reimagining secondary school, and is Chair of the Educational Implementation and Assessment and Innovation Committees. She has also supported the board directly through her work as Senior Staff Lead on the Education Committee. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank Lynn for her dedication to our district and for her efforts to support teaching and learning in our district and around the province for many years. We have been so fortunate to have you as part of our team, Lynn, and will miss you very much. Our very best wishes as you move into retirement and continue your work in your doctoral program. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Larson. And I see Lynn, you are here with us on camera, and I should have invited you to turn on your camera, but thank you for doing so so that we can all see you and and offer our immense gratitude for all that you have brought to our district. And you can see the expressions of gratitude from from the whole board here tonight. I wish we could be doing this in person. And so hopefully, we'll be able to to find a way to 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 express our appreciation to you in person as well. Superintendent, did I see your hand or you? No, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Lynn. Did anything you wanted to say before we moved on?
Not really in my announcement time, so I wasn't going to say something, but I will just say thank you very much. It has been an honor and a pleasure working in the district, and I'll miss everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also have a follow up announcement, and that is that the board is pleased to welcome Mr. Chris Stanger to the position of Assistant Superintendent with the Richmond School District effective August the first. Chris is going to be joining us from the Vancouver School District where he was Director of Instruction for School Services. And he's held a wide variety of leadership roles in Vancouver and Surrey School Districts. And in his current role, Chris is responsible for direct supervision and support of 20 elementary and secondary schools, as well as having district level responsibility for elementary and secondary choice programs, district fine arts, home learners, and career programs. Chris has also been a district administrator in student services and also in human resources and was an elementary principal for 11 years with the Surrey School District. On behalf of the board, it's my great pleasure to welcome Chris to our district. And we look forward to our work together with Chris starting in the fall. Also wanted to take just a moment before we get into the substance of our meeting tonight to thank you, our entire Richmond School District community, staff, parents, and students for doing your best, for us all doing our best to work together through another year of pandemic twists and turns to make sure that our schools remain places of connection and community support and of course, learning and inspiration for our students. On behalf of the board, thank you so very much to each and every one of you for everything that you have done to make this year meaningful and successful for our students. And a special thank you to our senior team who are with us tonight. You've been supporting the board's work and devoting much time to, as on top of all of your other work, to ensuring our board and committee meetings have been accessible and in particular, helping us test out some some hybrid meeting formats. And although we're online this month due to some of the technical and logistical challenges that we are still ironing out, and we wanted to ensure as smooth a meeting as possible, we are hopeful that we'll be back, be able to be back in person for our September board meeting. But thank you, thank you to staff for all your efforts in helping our meetings transition. Continue to work on that. I'm going to turn things over to our Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Wang, for a few reminders of how we do meetings here on Zoom.
Thank you, Chairperson. Just a reminder for our public joining us this evening that we'll have two question periods at which time we'll be reading questions that we received in the board meeting email account. So if you haven't submitted your questions, please feel free to do so to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca. And also for the public joining us this evening, you'll be able to watch and listen to the meeting, but will not be able to speak or chat during the meeting. So please send your questions to the board meeting email address or through the Q and A feature in Zoom. And also this meeting will be, there will be a recording of this meeting and we'll be making it available for for public viewing after this meeting. So that's my announcement back to you, Chairperson.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. And I realized I had one additional announcement. I just wanted to let everybody know that the board did make a presentation to the Select Standing Committee on Government and Finance earlier this month with some of our priorities for for funding and for consideration for the next provincial budget. And that information and the substance of our presentation can also be found on our website. We'll move then, just to checking, are there any materials not included in packages that were made available to the public, Ms. Wang?
Yeah, Chairperson, I confirm that all meeting materials are available to the public on our website.
Great, thank you very much. So looking for adoption of our agenda this evening. Do I have a mover? Trustee Larson, thank you. Seconded by trustee Lee, thank you. Any discussion additions? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Great, thank you. That's carried. Moving into our agenda, we have no presentations, special recognitions, or briefs this evening. So we are at our first question period. If there are any questions from attendees tonight, we're happy to take those. I see hand, Ms. Baberstock. Welcome. And if you want to turn your camera on, and thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Liz Baberstock, President Richmond Teachers Association, and thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. My question actually is in reference to page 19 of the package, Strategic Priority Three, Objective Two. I thought I'd put the question here now, and perhaps it can be answered when we get to that point. So page 19, Strategic Priority Three, Objective Two, Provide Clean, Healthy, and Safe Facilities. And knowing that as we end this year, we are still in a pandemic. And and I know the district has done a huge amount to make sure that we have healthy facilities. But also knowing that this has been challenged because of the lack of additional financial support. And at the same time, we've learned a lot with COVID-19, but also about general sneezes and diseases, which even when we come out of pandemics, sneezes and diseases will be a reality. So just wondering what is going to be the landscape for the the surfaces like doorknobs and the hand washing and having masks being available for when people want them in our schools? Because what we've experienced this year, like last year, unprecedented, different. This year was different than last year, but what I would say is that even to this day, we continue to have staffing shortages. Even today, on June 29th, I've never seen staffing shortages on June 29th, the second to the last day of the school year. That is the realities of COVID-19 and the fact that people do need to stay home when they're sick. And we just don't have enough staff, and this has really impacted everyone's workload. And I've spoken about this at other public meetings, but I think it's important at a board meeting to speak to the workload that and the impact that it has on absolutely everyone in schools. And outside of schools as well, I recognize that, but really in the schools, the administrators, the RTA members, the QP members, as people are having to be redeployed from their roles when there are not enough staff, and that's impacting the learning and the support that's available for students, and that's not anyone's fault. It's just reality. So, you know, as we approach next year, and I don't think many things in the landscape will change. There are some important things that we have learned through the pandemic, and and that is that health and safety remains an important objective for everyone and that where we can reduce transmission of sneezes and diseases, we should do everything we can because we need to support healthy schools, both for the staff that work there and for the students. So a long-winded question that could be answered later or now, but just recognizing the strain on the system and hoping that everybody has a chance to recharge, relax, because I don't think the fall will be much different. I hope I am wrong. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Liz. I'm just looking to see whether staff would want to be prepared to to respond or would be perhaps that was planned to be addressed in the in the strategic plan update. Superintendent Robinson?
Thank you. Through the chair, I agree with Ms. Baberstock. You know, it's important that there were a number of practices established this this past year and the year before, frankly, that that have assisted us, I believe, in keeping people healthier than they would have otherwise. Certainly, hand washing will continue to be encouraged in classrooms and asked of students, certainly. Masks will continue to be available. We do have a supply of masks that will continue to have available in classrooms, certainly. And then in terms of cleaning, I'm wondering if our executive director could speak to where we're at for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Through the chair. So, yeah, so you'll see in when we get to that part of the presentation, we have actually developed a post-COVID facilities operations plan for the new year, understanding that we are not going to have the the day custodians in elementary schools. But what we are going to be doing, we are going to be continuing the enhanced cleaning in once in a 24 hour period. That that won't change where there were where there are no permanent hand washing. Well, where there's no sinks in classrooms, where there has been the portable units, we are going to be maintaining those. We're taking them in to get cleaned out and we're putting them back in. The board generously gave us back one FTE of custodial time so that we can service those units next year. And so we actually have a very robust plan that'll that'll that covers both custodial services and transportation. And we're very confident that, again, we'll be we'll be able to do our best to curb transmission transmission of any airborne or contact diseases or viruses.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. And it's like that's a that's it for questions. I'll just double check with staff for monitoring our Q and A. Okay. And of course, having staff away and and trying to cover is has been a particular challenge in the past couple of years and everything that we can do. I know staff are are doing their best to ensure that we're providing the best environment to ensure that that people can stay healthy and and stay at work. Okay, we'll move further into our agenda. We are at our executive report. I'm going to turn things over to our superintendent.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm just moving my screens around here. There we go. Okay. So if we can get our presentation up on the screen. And it's my pleasure, as always, to be able to share a number of things that are happening around the school district. So first of all, amplifying district student voice. On May 30th, a large group of students from the District Student Voice Working Group met with the trustees and senior staff to talk about the importance of student voice across the district. It was a very engaging two hour session, and the students provided tremendous feedback to the trustees through a very well-prepared presentation. Students completely facilitated the event and took turns speaking to the slides that summarized the work of the group, articulating why student voice must continue to grow in our district. Equally impressive was the engagement at each table and the remarkable sophistication, depth, variety, and insight that students shared out at the end of table conversations. It was just a really great experience to be able to sit with some of our students and and hear the depth of what they believe and what they had to share with us. So we're excited to continue those conversations into next year. Next slide. Early learning and childcare are thriving in Richmond, and the Strong Start Centers are pleased to have families and their children back in person this year. Along with many other learning opportunities, there has been a focus on a drawing project at every Strong Start Center. Observing and documenting children's engagement helps educators adjust their practice to benefit the children. The district is also pleased to have opened its first just before preschool at Lee Elementary in April and is already hearing positive feedback from parents about that program as well. Recently, students at McNeil Secondary collaborated on the theme "Time, Past, Present, and Future" for an art project. They began with a prototype design of a large scale painting, and then they tapped into their own life, culture, passions, and history to produce an image that represented the time period they chose. Twenty-six paintings were then displayed on wooden panels in the school's gym hallway. The teachers invited classes to walk through time and view these wonderful works. The art exhibition was greatly supported by staff, students, families, and friends. And together, the club raised $2,100 from the event to be donated to B.C. Cancer, a great project. Table 38 has been a valued part of student leadership and student voice fabric in Richmond for over 20 years. Despite the challenges created by the pandemic, Table 38 has continued to meet regularly since the spring of 2020. The final meeting of 2022 was a very positive way to end the year and celebrate the first face-to-face meeting in over two years. Student facilitators met several times leading up to the event to brainstorm, co-plan, and organize the agenda for the meeting. The chosen theme of the importance of recognition and gratitude in leadership was important, relevant, and timely. Every element of the meeting was well organized and thoughtfully co-facilitated and allowed for students to have interactive and engaging table activities and group discussions. As our district administrator for student voice, Mr. Jim Allison retires this week, we'd like to also thank him and recognize him for his work in advancing student voice across the district. We have been very, very lucky to have him in this role. We now welcome Mr. Doug Ratzloff into that role for next year. Grade 11 spoilt student Emma Murray was selected to participate in this year's Emerging Composers Event hosted by Vancouver's Hard Rubber Orchestra, and she was the youngest of all the composers involved. Emma had her original composition, "That's One Cool Dinosaur: A Sizzling Salsa Tune", read and recorded by the Ten Piece Hard Rubber Orchestra, which is made up of some of Vancouver's top jazz musicians. The event offered an incredible opportunity for Emma to meet and mingle with some of Canada's best and brightest. Congratulations on behalf of the district to Emma. This year, the senior marketing class students from McNair Secondary raised over $2,100 for cancer research. Over the past 10 years, the students have raised a total of $11,127 for cancer research. The teacher and the students were very touched when they read a heartfelt thank you message from a cancer patient via the Community of Richmond's Facebook page. Moving forward, students and staff hope to continue to support and make a difference to the future of cancer research. Congratulations to those students. That's an amazing accomplishment. Bingham Elementary celebrated a big birthday this year. The school turned 100. A week-long celebration kicked off with an assembly and culminated with the school's first sports day in two years. Through various displays and activities, students learned about the school's history, reflected on the changes over the years, and connected with different cultures. The celebration gave students and staff a great sense of connection and belonging to the school community. Grade six and seven students at Mitchell Elementary recently enjoyed a one-day outdoor rafting trip in Squamish. That looks like fun. The fantastic fantastic trip was guided by extremely knowledgeable leaders and included two hours of team-building activities and a three-hour scenic rafting experience on the kid-friendly Chicken Missplash. This trip allowed students to experience an amazing outdoor adventure and make a direct connection with nature. Staff, students, and parent volunteers all raved about how much fun they had that day, and I'm hoping that I get an invitation next year. Students and staff were very excited to be able to hold their annual Tooney Talent Show in person again this year at Bridge Elementary. Over the course of four lunch hours, 60 students and staff members performed in front of an enthusiastic audience, showcasing talents in piano playing, dancing, singing, martial arts, car racing, joke telling, Rubik's Cube races, gymnastics, guitar, iPad art, life lesson advice, I should go to that one, puppeteering, and more. All the all funds raised, almost $900, are being donated to help refugees from Ukraine. The school also collected three boxes of food for the Richmond Food Bank, and again, congratulations to that group of students. Well done. Finally, EV Lesson Toolkit. Richmond School District teachers were the first municipality in Canada to be offered the Richmond EV Lesson Toolkit, R E L T, a digital teaching package program. The kindergarten and grade one students from Debeck Elementary observed how the program's electric mascot, EV, had the same heart plate as their teacher's electric car. The lesson plans sparked creativity for students to submit designs of unique 3D cars, and the class was awarded a $1,000 cash prize for being in school with the most entries. So so many great things happening around our school district. And just before I wrap up, Chairperson, as we bring the year to a close, as you've already done, I did want to express my gratitude as superintendent to our staff, our parent community, and to our students. I think it's worth acknowledging that this has not been an easy year for many people. A year ago, we were looking ahead to the 2021-22 school year. I think with a sense of optimism that the year would be smoother than the previous year. And although great many things had taken place this year, as we just heard, I think it's safe to say that this year has been equally challenging to the previous one for some different reasons. Despite all the challenges, though, I've been so impressed every day by what I've seen happening on our schools. I want to thank our staff for their dedication and their commitment to doing the right thing for our students this year, despite what seemed like a never-ending supply of new challenges at times. I've been continually impressed by how our staff, no matter what their role in the district is, have set aside their own needs to do everything they could to ensure the needs of our students were being met. And I'm grateful to each and every one of our 3,500-plus employees for that. I'd also like to thank Richmond parents for your support, and in particular, for your patience. We know this has not been a normal year again, and we are so appreciative of the way so many parents have demonstrated patience and understanding and have worked alongside their children's teachers and schools as we've all navigated these difficult situations together. We are all looking forward to next year, when we can hopefully see a return to many of the events and activities that we've had to miss out on this year. To our students, I want to thank you as well for the way you've shown such courage and resilience throughout the past two years. Whether you are graduating this year or midway through your time with us, we are honored to serve you, and we look forward to hopefully smoother sailing next year. And just before I wrap up, I would like to thank the board. This has not been an easy time to be governors. There have been so many challenges from above and below, and I am grateful and with and have enormous respect for the trustees that I have the pleasure of working with every day. And I want to thank you on behalf of the school district for your work. It's been another long year, but I am proud to say our district community has come together under some challenging circumstances, and we have much to celebrate as we head into next year, and I wish everyone a safe and happy summer. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Robinson, for your report, for taking us through another great story of learning from this past month. I know it's always a challenge to figure out what not to put in because there are so many great stories of learning happening in our schools. Thank you to you for your leadership and keeping then holding the vision and the big picture and helping the board do so as well alongside of you. And to circle back to your comments about Mr. Allison, you know, and in I would think I can speak for the board. And when we have our board and student meetings and see Table 38 in action, especially, we certainly see and hear the respect and appreciation that students have for Mr. Allison. And and the board would offer its deep appreciation also to him for his his all his work with our student leaders and nurturing nurturing young hearts and minds. So, Mr. Allison, I hope you're listening. Well, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda. With approval of the minutes, we have minutes from the regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, May 25th, for approval. Have a mover. Lots of movers. Okay. Trustee, trustee Larson, thank you very much. Trustee, give us three seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of adoption? Thank you. The minutes are adopted. There's also a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, May 25th, for information. Now we're going to move to business arising, and we have quite a bit. At the end of the year, we, the board always receives a number of updates. And so there's a lot of information coming. We hope you can all stay stay with us because it really is a great, I think it'll be a great way for us to get a good view of a lot of important work that's been happening this year.
Sorry, Chair Nixon. Sorry to bother you, but there's some background noise. If you could just ask somebody to mute. I don't know if you're hearing it, but it's distracting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to pay attention to that. Is that okay right now?
If I may, Chairperson Nixon, I believe it might be coming from the microphone that's on the headset, the headphones that you're wearing, just maybe rubbing against clothes or something like that.
Thank you. If I sit very still. Okay. I'll do that for now, and then I'll try to problem solve as we, what I'm not on. So 6A Strategic Plan Update on Priority Three of our strategic plan. So six A strategic plan update on priority three of our strategic plan. I do have noise in the background and I'm going to go deal with it. If you see me turn my, my screen off for a minute, I know what's happening. We have a report from our executive director of facilities services and our executive director of information and business technologies. And Mr. Ling, I believe you're going to start us off. Welcome. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good evening. It is a privilege to provide an update on strategic priority three, optimize facilities and technologies, and to share about the progress that has been made throughout the school year. A more detailed report is included within the public agenda package from pages eighteen to thirty. Strategic priority three focuses focuses on optimizing and improving our facilities and technology to provide a learning environment that is safe, secure and accessible and that inspires innovation and creativity. Strategic priority three has three goals. I will speak to goal one and then we'll pass it along to Mr. Frank Geier, Executive Director of Facility Services, to provide an update on goal two and three. After we have shared on all three goals, we will then welcome questions and our comments. Within goal one, there are seven objectives and forty key actions. The first objective, the development of a three year learning and business technology plan is currently in progress. Focus groups have been conducted to engage over two hundred and fifty students and over one hundred staff. These discussions were valuable to listen to the voice of our key stakeholders. Comments and feedback were documented on post-it notes and have been categorized and sorted into themes. We are actively working on the development of goals, objectives, key actions and key performance indicators. This learning and business technology plan will be finalized and shared publicly during the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three school year. We have achieved our key actions for objective two, increasing access to technology hardware and software by ensuring they are reliable and relevant for their intended purpose. We've increased the number of devices in our district lending cards by an additional forty three percent. We've developed and offered our first school funded lease option, making it more affordable for schools to be able to acquire technology. We've provided opportunities for schools to buy out iPads and laptops that were expiring from a lease term at a discounted rate. All of our teachers, principals and vice principals receive laptops as part of a three year lease refresh cycle. This past year, we replaced approximately two thousand laptops. These three year lease refreshes always ensure that staff have current technology that is reliable, secure and functional. And we are currently working on a strategy to increase the number of iPads for educational assistance, as well as adding additional technology to the facility service center to improve access for all of our support staff based over that location. We've also focused on increasing access to software applications. We've tracked an increase in the number of staff and students using Microsoft three sixty five applications, most specifically Microsoft Teams. We've also tracked an increase in the use of Adobe software. Students and staff now have access to all of these core applications from any location on any device, whether they are at school or at home. Objective three focused on expanding the professional learning opportunities to support the integration of technology. We've accomplished the key actions by developing resources and frameworks to support the integration of tech, while expanding learning opportunities through increasing access to workshops, both in person and virtual, as well as creating and sharing more instructional resources, videos and support options. Throughout all schools, we have established ed tech mentors that provide technology leadership and support to their staff. In the coming year, we will be expanding this distributed leadership model with the invitation for staff to become Microsoft three sixty five teams leads. Our tech services team has been successful in providing timely and responsive assistance to staff, processing over eight hundred calls on average per month, plus hundreds of work orders. Objective four involved implementing and supporting the use of Microsoft three sixty five and teams as a common collaboration platform. The key actions have been accomplished. All students and staff have full access to use a Microsoft suite of applications. And the analytics of staff and secondary student use has demonstrated a consistent increase throughout the year. Every school, department and many secondary classes are using online teams that provide access to online discussions, file sharing and posting and collecting assignments. Over two thousand staff members have been supported through the process of migrating all of their digital files to Microsoft One Drive. And students are also being encouraged to use One Drive as a safe and secure file storage option. The feedback received from staff and students is that Microsoft Teams, the user experience with Microsoft Teams has been intuitive, stable and effective. As we look ahead to next year, we are excited to launch district wide collaboration teams where staff from different schools can connect, discuss ideas and share resources. We have achieved our key actions for objective five, strengthening the security of our network, data, software, systems and practices. We have created a district wide password policy to increase the security of account access. This password policy will be fully implemented in the next school year. All Richmond leadership team members have been enrolled in multi-factor authentication, requiring them to confirm their identity on a second device before being able to log in to various applications. Our email exchange system has been migrated from on premise district servers to cloud based servers. Backup procedures have been refined to provide added protection of data and incident response plans to identify, mitigate impact and respond to cyber threats have been created. And our network firewalls that control what and how data is transferred into and out of our district network have been strengthened to increase our internal network security. Objective six continues to build upon the theme of cybersecurity. We have implemented a security awareness and training software that will be utilized to help increase education, foster greater understanding and build staff capacity to identify and minimize cyber threats. An internal phishing campaign was completed this year to establish our baseline level to track progress against. We will be launching phishing awareness campaigns next year and will encourage staff to complete online modules to learn more about potential cyber threats. The final objective number seven focuses on enhancing wireless access and network stability. Additional network hardware has been installed across district sites to strengthen access and connectivity. And automated scripts have been created to update wireless access points on a nightly basis to improve stability and functionality. We are also conducting a wireless infrastructure review that will result in a report and recommendations about future enhancements. I'm extremely proud of the work that has been accomplished on the seven objectives of goal one and would like to acknowledge and thank members, all members of the learning and business technology team, our digital literacy consultants and all teacher consultants and all staff and students for their engagement, partnership, commitment, patience and innovation with using technology as a tool to enhance and support learning, as well as for business functions and efficiencies. I would now like to invite Executive Director Frank Geier to provide an update on goal number two and number three.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. So, so gold's number two and three of strategic priority three deal with the district's facilities are well maintained, equitable, safe and conducive to learning. And then goal three is the district fosters energy efficient and environmentally sustainable facilities and practices. So in goal two of strategic priority three, we have accomplished quite a bit since the strategic plan was adopted. Excellent. So our first objective is to provide equitable learning environments through effective and efficient facilities planning, management and resource allocation. So under this objective, we have a number of key actions. One of them was to create or to establish a cross departmental team that would ensure that facilities, planning, management, resource allocation supports provision of equitable learning spaces or learning environments. So this team has been created. That's involved all into depart. It was an all the interdepartmental facility services team. We've also involved the health and safety department and purchasing. And the goal here was to ensure that we do support the provision of equitable learning environments. And part of this was to also cross train our managers so that they can, so any manager can deal with any other managers issues as they come up, should they be away. And this team will be, we're going to be working over the summer on our first annual report on facilities condition in September. Our next key action plan, key action was to work with the ELT to ensure that sustainable cohort management is maintained and comprehensive program. And boundary reviews are conducted to help improve equity in learning environments throughout the district. So how did we go about doing this? Well, we updated the long range facilities plan, action plan to reflect this, this work. And this is in response to us actually completing the update to the long range facilities plan. And we're going to be starting in on this, on this key action this summer. The third key action under objective one was to develop and pilot a climate risk assessment project at ten district sites. This has, this work has been completed. And or sorry, the work is well underway on this pilot project with completion expected by October two thousand and twenty two. Our second objective is to provide clean, healthy and safe facilities. And we have a number of key actions that we've also completed here. The first was to conduct a operations department review, including to soil governance, staffing's procedures and practice to improve the delivery of cleaning services at schools. What we did is we contracted with a, a third party consultant, retired director of facilities for both school districts and for Coast Mountain Bus Company to conduct a bumper to bumper review of our, of our soil operations. That review was completed in September two thousand and twenty one. And we have, and we have already implemented the majority of the recommendations with the final recommendation to be implemented to be the hiring of an assistant manager custodial services. And interviews are taking place next year, next week for this position. So we're very excited about moving ahead with this to optimize our, our cleaning in our schools. The, the, the next key objective, our key action item was to develop a facilities renewal program. In the past, we had a number of funding sources known as the annual facility grant, school enhancement program and other programs. Well, these were funding programs, but they never were stitched together under one overall program for the district. So we developed the facilities renewal program, which is a multi-year strategy to operate, to optimize all of that, all of that available funding, both from the province and from the district, as well as funding that we get from utilities such as B C Hydro and Fortis B C, so that we can have one, one place for all maintenance of buildings and grounds to reside. And we have a plan, a five year plan that we can then synergize with our five year capital plan. And the picture that you see here is Garden City Elementary, which was arguably one of our ugliest schools. And this is, this is what it currently looks like. So we've modernized the exterior and the interior of that facility to give it more curb appeal, but also to make it a basically a nicer learning environment inside and out. So our, we did complete the plan for two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three, and we're currently working on year two of our five year plan. The third key action item was to develop and implement post COVID nineteen facilities operation plan for soil services and transportation based on updated provincial health and safety guidelines. And as I mentioned earlier, when Ms. Bavrestock was inquiring, we have completed the post COVID plan. We, we have, we will be adjusting our existing personnel to be able to deal with these, but and we're more than confident that we'll be able to check all the boxes moving forward for basically the new reality when it comes to cleaning in our schools and in our buses. Our third objective under goal number two was to implement the two thousand and twenty maintenance review recommendations. So we, in two thousand and twenty, we had an independent company, P G S Facilities, do again, I call it a bumper 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 review of our maintenance operations. So that was at the time, maintenance and operations were part, were a separate entity from the project office. So what we ended up doing is one of the recommendations was to consolidate and reorganize maintenance operations, transportation, planning and development functions into one single branch, which we've completed. That's the facility services branch. There was another recommendation was that we replace our antiquated work order system, which we've done. We've actually last fall implemented a new enterprise asset management system, asset planner, which improves the service request system as schools and other clients make service requests into facilities, but also that we're able to track and see where we got hotspots that we may need to do more work, more expensive work to reduce the number of service requests for a particular asset within our building. So we're very excited about having this, that we can actually track our, not just the service request, but also just the overall condition of our facility so that we can make good decisions, excellent decisions down the road when it comes to the limited funding we have available. Objective four is to implement strategic recommendations in the long range facilities plan. So the, the first key item here, key action item here was to update the long range facilities plan, which we did. And we were very pleased that the board approved the update in November two thousand and twenty one. Where our goal is to, is every two calendar years to do a review of the long range facilities plan and make adjustments as necessary to reflect changes in demographics, population, housing, and also educational programming and other factors that could influence the future of our facilities. The next key objective, there's two key objectives that are tied to each other. One was to complete a comprehensive boundary review, a district choices, district choice program review and a report recommending restarting phases two and three of the boundary reviews that we finished up in twenty, in two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty. And the second item that we have is to develop an update plan for the expansion of elementary school capacity, including exploring opportunities for site acquisition in the north central region. And these were, these items are actually on the, they're on the radar to actually, we were actually scheduled to start this work this coming fall, but we've actually, planning has already started work on both of these items. And by the end of this calendar year, we're expecting to have reports on both these items. The fourth key action item, which is a big one these days, is to establish new childcare operations at existing school facilities. So we beefed up the wording within our long range facilities plan. We revised district policy, procedure and guidelines to reflect the provincial viewpoint on and importance on childcare in school facilities. And we were able to open one new childcare facility, which was we, we took money from the rapid renovation program that from the Ministry of Children and Families Development, which has now been transferred over to the Ministry of Education. And we completed the childcare renovation at Tate to create two dedicated childcare facilities. We recently finished construction of a new dedicated childcare facility at Tomsett Elementary and the operator is scheduled to start the program in September two thousand and twenty two. And we received funding approval for the design build on two modular childcare facilities that we're going to be putting at Steve's in Maple Lane. And the reason we're going modular is that we want the ability to quickly have these, these facilities in place that are going to be, that will be constructed for a forty to fifty year life. But the important thing is that if we need to expand the schools at some point in the future, if we need to relocate these facilities, it'll be very easy to do. So this is an economical and if, and time effective way to provide childcare in our schools. And what we've done, we've actually dovetailed. The reason that we're doing it at Steve's in Maple Lane is we dovetail, dovetail the childcare program with the. The reason that we're doing it at Steve's in Maple Lane is we dovetail, dovetail the childcare program with the. Sizing mitigation program whereby whenever we take over a site to put in temporary portals for swing space during construction. Rather than restore the space back to green space or whatever else it was used for. Is be able to use that, to use that, that site for these new facilities. The fifth, and I apologize if you hear my dog in the background. The fifth key action item is to update the five-year capital plan. And work on the capital plan for this year has been complete and will be presented later in this meeting. The sixth objective is to identify opportunities to address space and operational deficiencies of non-school functions. So what this basically means is that where the province provides capital funds for either school. Enhancement for school seismic upgrading, expansions, additions. Non-school facilities such as the school board office, facility services, the tech center. They're not covered. So the board took a very bold move by approving. The retention and renovation of what was the Mitchell Annex originally. Into a new facility for adult education. And the purpose behind this was that so we could relocate. Adult education out of Riddle Park, which was not an ideal location for adult education. To this location, which is much more of a storefront, closer proximity to buses. And, and then we're, and then to take that space that's, that's remaining at Riddle Park and then repurpose it. To relocate learning and business technology staff and planning staff continue to look at other. Other deficiencies in the non-school areas and will be taking the necessary actions. And making recommendations moving forward to optimize again the use of our facilities. The seventh objective is to work collaboratively with the Ministry of Education to accelerate seismic operating. So the first key action is around developing business cases and in, in. Yeah, I guess in the tradition of the Richmond Project Team. We've, we received support for the twelfth and thirteenth projects out of thirty five. For seismic operating by, with when the ministry approved. Or supported, I should say, the development of business cases for Dubeck and Dixon Elementary. In response to our capital plan submission. And we continue to work closely with the Ministry of Education. To knock that list down as quickly as we can. The next key item, key action is to identify opportunities where two or more underutilized schools in need of seismic upgrade. Will be replaced with fewer upgraded schools. So what this basically means is that if we have a cluster of three schools. That are all, that all are high risk or high level one risk. Seismic assessments, they're in proximity to each other and they're, they're, the utilization isn't as high as it should be. Is to look at possibly upgrading one building, replacing a building, closing a building. So this is just, again, it's optimizing resources that not only helps out government, it helps out the school district because. Then we're not having to maintain as much vacant space or surplus space in our schools. So. This work is ongoing. So planning staff are continuing to look at opportunities. In the capital plan, you'll see that in, that by twenty twenty four, we actually have. Identified two groups of schools that could possibly fall under this. But this, this objective, or sorry, this key action is not expected to be completed until twenty twenty four. And our final objective under goal two. Is the creation of flexible environments that are, are sorry, learning environments that are flexible and, and support inclusive educational practices. So we have a number of, actually, in this case, we have, we have two key action items. One is to collaborate with project managers, maintenance managers and educational leaders to identify and create flexible learning environments. And the second action item is to establish space flexibility in schools whereby classrooms, multipurpose rooms. Can share space with childcare operators. Under this, what we've done so far is we have been able to create. By using learning enhancement, or sorry, learning environment space funding and other funds. To create some outdoor learning environments that could be used for multitude of functions. And we've also implemented a number of school library renovations to make them more modular, more into learning commons. And we're going to be continuing to work with it, with educational services on the, the notion of. Cross utilization of classrooms after hours by childcare, but that's a longer term initiative. So that's it for goal two and goal three is, has to do with the district fosters energy. Efficient and environmentally sustainable facilities and practices. The first objective. Is to develop and implement a five-year sustainability and climate action plan. Which we did, we did complete all the work on it and it was approved by the board and adopted in December twenty twenty one. And this is a major. This is, this was a major win for us to get this done because this is something that. It, it, it forms the basis for all the decisions we make when it comes to, to sustainability and energy. And then climate action. So the second key action here was to actually implement the plan. And it's because it's, it's only been a few months since we've had it. The primary focus has been on balancing energy efficiency with ventilation recommendations to mitigate against COVID nineteen. One of the issues we run into is, is when you've got. Maintenance, building maintenance colliding with energy and sustainability, where sustainability, air, energy, sustainability are all about. Reducing greenhouse gases, reducing our reliance on, on electricity and natural gas. Whereas maintenance is focused more on client, on occupant comfort. So what we're, what we've been doing is working as part of that interdepartmental team that I mentioned is part of goal two. Is how do we balance the two off against each other? And so that's, that's basically an in progress. It's a work in progress, but with the new ventilate classroom ventilation program. That we're going to be, that, that the board approved, we're actually balancing them off by actually building in. We're future-proofing the work we do, that if we do change from a natural gas boiler heating source to. A cleaner energy in the future, that the work that we're putting in right now is not lost. So the work we put in, so the ventilation upgrades we do are basically future-proofed against changes in the heating technology. We also completed six waste audits at schools. And we trained green teams to maintain outdoor learning spaces. So this is just a small snapshot of what our, our bigger picture is. Our third key action is to ensure that the sustainability and climate action plans integrate with the L R F P and. The two do speak to each other. When we did the upgrade, the update to the L R F P that the board approved. We did contain a whole new section dedicated to sustainability and climate action. And then the discap also makes reference throughout to the Long Range Facilities Plan. The, the next, the next two objectives, the next three objectives are more long-term. That haven't been scheduled, that really haven't been worked on much, so I'm not going to really go into a lot of detail here. The second objective is to improve energy, or sorry, is to improve energy efficiency, climate resilience and sustainability of all facilities. Capital improvements. We're actually taking this on as we speak, as we're putting together the business cases for the seismic upgrading projects. So we are integrating at work, but the definition of how we go about doing this is something that we're going to be starting in September. The third objective is to implement sustainable, sustainable practices and programs to improve waste. Diversion rates, generation, greenhouse gas emissions. And to conserve water, promote climate action. So these are longer term items. Again, there's a zero waste strategy. We've actually started work on that right now through the waste audits. But the majority of this work, the heavy lifting, when it comes to this objective, isn't scheduled to start until September twenty twenty three. That doesn't mean we're, we're not going to be working on it behind the scenes. It says that we're going to formalize and, and. In the, in, in our, and pace ourselves so that this work actually is ready to go come September twenty twenty three. And our final objective under goal three. Is to work with the Assistant Superintendent to provide training to staff and develop programs initiatives for students. So under this, we had, we had two key action items. The first one, oh, sorry, that was the key action. I'm sorry, the first, sorry, the objective was to increase sustainability, education, awareness, training. So the first piece, we did implement a thermal comfort campaign at six sites. We presented at the district convention, the discap. And we've created videos of waste audits that have been shared by the recycling alternative. And our last key action item was to develop a business case for teacher consultant. Focused on sustainability for students. There's been no action on this item until now because of obviously we, we faced some budget pressures. But in the absence of a teacher consultant, our energy and sustainability team will work with learning services at an individual school level to communicate information. That can be used to support B C school curriculum. So that concludes goals two and three. And I, I also wish to extend a huge thanks to my team. At Facility Services, our managers are totally dedicated and focused on one thing. And that is our clients and making sure that our comfort level is there, the health and safety is there. And that we're using resources wisely so that we're not wasting money and wasting time. Doing things that aren't important, that don't fit into the overall strategic plan or the long range facilities plan. So a big shout out to my, to all of my managers and all my staff at the Facility Services Center. And so now we can open it up to any questions on any of the goals for strategic priority three.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. It is a. Very all a comprehensive priority area. It encompasses a lot of operations of the district and I see some questions coming or comments. So let's take those in order. Trustee Eagles team.
Thank you, Man Chair. Oh, Mr. Guyer and Mr. Lang, that was really a lot of progress on a lot of issues. It's. Thanks and our appreciation for, for all that work. But my question is going to bring up another aspect. So after all this experience and work done, are there any aspects of the strategic plan within your areas of responsibility? That you feel at this stage need to be rethought or come to the conclusion, oh, this can't be done or. So anything along those lines.
Well, thank you, Trustee Goldstein through the chair. I'll, I'll, I'll answer it for my group and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Lang if he has any comments. No, actually, right now, there's, there's really nothing. We, we put a lot of effort into. Into the development of our, of these goals and objectives and the key action items. And everything is more or less falling into place the way we expected it. That said, the door is always open, that if something comes up that we're not ready for. Like for instance, if the strategic plan would have been adopted prior to COVID. We probably would have been making a lot of changes in our, in our focus areas and philosophies. But for facilities, no, not really. We're, we're basically seeing the course and happy with the progress that we're making.
If I may follow up from Executive Director Guyer. The objectives and key actions that we created for this current year. Were created and built within the midst of the pandemic. So we felt like we had a very solid. Perspective as to where, what we were walking into in the current year that we are in. So we very much have remained on track with the goals and objectives and action plans that we had set out. However, as part of the development of a learning and business technology plan, it really is giving us the opportunity right now. To look ahead to the future three years and to be able to build and shape. What continues to, to come in the years ahead of us. So. For the most part, this year was pretty well exactly as we had anticipated. But as I say, through the stakeholder engagement process. And the development of the learning business technology plan, we do have the ability to. Alter the roadmap that we are looking to pursue within the next three years.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Trustee Sergeant.
Well, I just, I just really, it's just a comment. It's pretty remarkable. It's amazing. The amount of work that has happened. I'm just such a big fan of strategic plans. Good ones that have been well-written with a lot of collaboration because you can just see how you can move along. And really make a difference and everybody knows where you're going. So I wanted to first thank Superintendent Robinson. Because he really led us to this really good writing and making sure that we had a strat plan. So I just want to really say big kudos to you because it really makes all the difference, especially as a governor. It's just. So wonderful and the public knows exactly where we're going and where we might not go yet, but we might in the future. And then to, to just really say the work, Mr. Guyer and Mr. Lang during a pandemic, I know you were. Planning for it, but there was a lot of emergent things that happened in both of your domains. Where it took you off course. Okay, we need this, we need this, we need this. Okay, kids got to learn online more. So I really wanted to say a mega thank you to both you and your teams. For just keeping the focus clearly on the students. And it's so evident when you report out. And I'm, I'm happy that this is, it's the year-end report out, but you keep us abreast all during the year too. So it's not like, oh, wow. But it's truly, truly very impressive and I hope you know that, that. Every aspect of, of a district, when you're looking as a governor is, is covered and. And you're honest to say we're not quite there yet or we can reshape it. So. Kudos to everybody. I just think it's going to put us in good stead again, along with a new board. Can you imagine just picking up this document and know where, know where you're going? It's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for your comments, Trustee Sergeant, Trustee Larson.
Thank you. I want to thank you both for your presentations and this has been just fantastic. Because every time there's a report or a presentation, I learn something. And it, that is just so exciting and it, and it makes me wiser and helps me do a better job at what I'm doing. I am curious, if I may ask, about the school. They were little boxes, the school teams. I'm a visual learner, obviously. And so I'm curious, so does that allow school to school? Collaboration or is it still within each school?
Sure. So if I may through the chair respond. There are a couple different ways in which we are currently utilizing those online team structures. So one dimension of that is every staff within every school, within every department, has their own staff team. So all members of that staff are part of an online community where you can engage in dialogue. Ask questions, have conversations, share resources and files. And really, it's an online place for collaboration within that school environment. We are also using teams in a classroom setting. So, for example, we automate. Every teacher in secondary school, there is a class team that is created. That connects with our student information system and all the students are also enrolled in a class team. So it's a collaboration space for teachers and students to be able to work together. For the purpose of strengthening a learning, an online learning platform for that specific class. We do have some other larger district or departmental teams. And we are looking to launch in the start of the next school year. District-wide teams that will allow teachers and staff from all across the district to be able to engage. In topics around literacy and numeracy and all those different elements of student leadership, all the different elements that are critical within our schools. And creating ways to break down the barriers of walls between schools and to provide more opportunities. For our staff who have many expertise to be able to share amongst themselves. So. We wanted to start in a smaller scale so that we could build capacity within a very structured environment. And as we continue to move forward, we're going to be able to expand how we use a lot, utilize these tools across the entire district.
Wow, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Wow.
Pleasure.
Hey, Trustee Tavlatney.
Yes, well, what a way to, to end a year.
Yes, well, what a way to, to end a year with a report like that. Just amazing information and, and such good follow up on the strategic plan to know, you know, everything that we're doing. After all that planning. And I wanted to comment on the new facility management system versus the old work order system because I know trustees used to we, you know, I'm sure all of us heard this, have heard this before we go out and visit schools. And it's, well, I put in the work order about three or four times and it's, the work's still not been done. And we really need this. So, you know, do you think you could give someone a poke in the side and get it going? And so, you know, I think this, this system sounds much more efficient and we can see the fruits of that already. So really appreciative to hear about that and all the work we're doing. And then I wondered about the iPad and laptop purchasing, you know, program for the, the leases that are, you know, are finished. So how have we notified families or, or students that want to purchase these this equipment and really need it? How, how are we, how are you running that program? And how are we notifying it or promoting it?
So through the chair, the first approach that we have implemented this year, we have provided those opportunities for schools to be able to purchase equipment to increase the number of devices for student use within the schools. That has been our focus for the current year. That being said, what you have described there is actually one of our future goals that we continue to work on. Which is to provide cost effective ways for staff as well as students and families to be able to acquire technology at a, at a lower cost. So rather than looking on Craigslist or some other place and buying a piece of equipment that you don't really know the history of, what we, what we are working towards. We've actually made substantial progress on that, but we haven't made it public yet. Is different ways that we will be able to offer and allow members of our school community to be able to purchase equipment that has completed its three year lease cycle. And that will be available to support those families or the staff.
Okay, so currently it's just for schools and, and staff.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's just amazing because I remember I was thinking back to when we used to have to go as parents and staff casino nights to get a computer lab for a school. And, you know, we've come off a long way. So we, we used to have briefs and briefs about, you know, schools needing technology. So this is really great. That lease program has been fantastic and it's been in place for a number of years, but even better now. So it's good to hear because, you know, technology's moving at light speeds. And, and our students need to acquire and families need to acquire the, the tools for them to work on it, on things at home too. So anyway, thank you very much for the presentations. All good news.
Thank you, trustee Tavlatney. Superintendent, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. I, I just, as a follow up to trustee Sergeant's very kind comments, I wanted to be very clear that this has been a a huge group and team effort and I had no way to take credit for this, the senior team, the executive team, our management staff, our principals, vice principals, and frankly, folks at the school level are all contributing to the success of our plan. We have 3,500 employees and I would say that in some way, every one of those employees is contributing to the success of our strategic plan. So although I, I appreciate your gracious comments, I wanted to be clear that this is very much a whole district effort. Thank you.
Indeed. Thanks for that. I just had a couple of, of quick comments. It's hard to know what to comment on. There's, there's so much to affirm and all good work being done. It's, it's really great to see the emphasis on increasing the, the, you know, the childcare spaces in our schools. We know how much it means to families to have those spaces attached to our schools. In particular, having spaces in general, which I know are still in high demand, but to have them also be part of our school communities is really important. You know, enhancing our learning spaces, the amount of work that's been, been done on that, including our, our library spaces as well and our learning space for our adults in our community who want to continue their learning as well. So it's great to see the progress on all of that. And we've talked about the sustainability and climate action plan before we've had dedicated reports on that. I was interested in the climate risk assessments that are happening with the first 10 of our schools and had a question, it would just be around, you know, what are we, are there themes emerging in terms of, of what we need to be attentive to? And I'm imagining that the those themes are going to be, you know, woven into future iterations of the plan and into some of our action plans.
Man, I'm sure, yes, I can respond to that. Yes. So we, as we, as we work our way through, as we, right now, I mean, the message received from my understanding, talking to our energy manager, Jonathan Hall and our energy specialist, T Nugent, is that we we've got a very engaged student community when it comes to climate action. They're very knowledgeable. And as we work our way through the various audits, yeah, anything that we pick up, any common threads, we'll, we'll try to, when we do our annual review of the district sustainability climate action plan, we'll be incorporating that. But right now, all I can say is from what I, we're still compiling the data, but but right now the message is pretty, it's, it basically, it's, there's a lot of a lot of recognition of what we're already doing and to basically keep doing it and don't let our foot off the accelerator. So but what we'll be doing is we'll, we'll probably be making a report or probably making a presentation. We do an annual presentation on sustainability. I believe it'll be in the late fall, could be around November and, but we'll, we'll be able to report on that then.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. That sounds great. And just a final comment would be around all of our technology, work around technology and access to resources. And it's, it's really encouraging to see that we've been intentionally reaching out for student and staff input and feedback. And I know we've, we've also heard from parents, I know the board has around access to, to more technology. We hear a lot about wifi. And I know that's also in, an ongoing, ongoing improvements in that area, but it, I mean, it really is equitable access to all of that in support of the learning is, is not only the future, it's our present reality. It's so important. So great to see the work happening, happening in that area. Well, thank you. We've got a lot of, a lot more updates to come. So thank you both for this report and we're going to move to our next update, which is our annual report that comes to the board on, on SOGI and our work in the area of SOGI. And for that, I believe we have our director of instruction, Mr. Joe Hall. Welcome, welcome, Ralph. Turn things over to you.
Thank you, Chairperson Nixon. And good evening, everyone. Tonight we'll be sharing our annual sexual orientation and gender identity, also known as SOGI update to the Board of Education. Speaking to points that are part of the report in your package, pages 31 to 35, which are then followed by the policy and regulation. I will begin with a brief overview and summary of progress on goal one and goal two. And our district administrator, student services, Marie Ratcliffe, will provide an update on goal three and goal four. As noted in this report, our implementation of policy 106, sexual orientation and gender identity is rooted in strategic priority to goal one, that district learning environments are equitable and inclusive. As well as strategic priority to goal two, the district actively addresses unconscious bias and privilege systemic discrimination and marginalization based on factors such as ability, color, cultural identity, gender, gender identity, indigeneity, political beliefs, race, religious beliefs, sexual orientation and socioeconomic status. The district's ongoing commitment to policy implementation is focused on working towards providing a safe environment for all students, staff and families, including those who identify as LGBTQ2S plus, and that acronym stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer or questioning and two spirits. The goal has been to create an understanding in order to bring our schools and community together in support of all of our students. Our SOGI advisory has diverse representation in terms of membership, as you can see on top of, on the top page two of the report, including all of our employee groups, the Board of Education, Vancouver Coastal Health, the York's MP, City of Richmond District staff and Richmond District Parents Association, as well as students. This year, there were four advisory committee meetings with three occurring in person and one held virtually, which was the January one, just due to the emergence of the Omicron variant. It's important to note that there's a tremendous amount of work that occurs in subcommittees throughout the school year in between each of these larger advisory committee meetings. We have four specific overarching goals and I'll speak to the first two. So with this, with respect to goal one, students and staff who identify as LGBTQ2+ will feel safe, supported, valued and included in their schools and classrooms. We have identified some, some themes around gender neutral washrooms as well as student connection and leadership. In terms of updates regarding gender neutral washrooms, we're able to confirm that all schools have appropriate signage to indicate to students that gender neutral washroom spaces are available. However, we do note that in some schools, the location of these spaces is not necessarily ideal. So this is a continued area of focus. Currently, the goal one subcommittee is engaged in the scan that will extend into next school year, staff washing spaces to ensure appropriate signage is installed and that staff washing spaces are available to be gender neutral as well. Regarding student connection and leadership through the work of our district coordinator and teacher consultant, working with SOGI leads at our secondary schools, there have been rainbow cafes held for secondary students, including two in person this spring, and those were the first in person rainbow cafes that we had in two years. We have a number of diversity clubs established in elementary schools for students to connect. This year, we also had student leaders who are represented on our SOGI advisory committee. And we also had student representation at a national youth forum that was held virtually as well as a provincial youth forum. Throughout the district, students continue to share their experiences and perspectives also with staff through professional learning opportunities. And we're also pleased to report that our advisory committee has established a guiding document for schools to plan for the installation of rainbow crosswalks and walk, walkways. We have two pilot schools. The first one will be Homer Elementary and the second will be McNeil Secondary. And these are two schools where we had conversations already taking place and these two schools are slated to have those rainbow crosswalks installed this summer. Also, within goal one, our first ever rainbow network was hosted for employees this past year for those who identify as LGBTQ2+ as well as allies. And the focus of this network was to really look at terminology, language and positive allyship. Moving on to goal two, which is articulating that staff members in the Richmond School District will have the appropriate knowledge and skills in order to feel confident in effectively supporting LGBTQ2+ students in their classroom and school. There's a continued focus on employee support and training and this included a scan of staff this spring in selected secondary and elementary schools to assess staff perceptions around implementation of SOGI policy. As well as to guide future professional development opportunities to support our school based staff. It's really a temperature check to get a sense of where people are at with their learning. In addition, with the aim to further build capacity across the district, professional learning sessions were held for teacher librarians, QP staff, as well as all, all employees were provided an opportunity at the district wide convention in February. So many of these opportunities did occur throughout the school year and has continued to focus on developing a SOGI toolkit for staff to access, develop and share appropriate resources. Our SOGI leads meet four times during the school year and a month, on a monthly basis, they do receive correspondence and updates from the district coordinator. We also saw a number of our schools engage in the innovation grant process to further the learning that's taking place within their school communities. I will now, now invite district administrator Marie Ratcliffe to provide an update on goals three and four.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So goal three. It, it reads, the Richmond School District will work alongside parents, family members and members of our community in order to support LGBTQ2+ children and youth. In terms of the summary of our progress here, our committee actually believes that this is going to be an area of growth as we're moving into the next school year. Highlights include our committee members continue to work with SOGI 123 and out in schools to promote safer and more diverse learning environments. With the goal of sharing more broadly with our parent community. And district staff are exploring the possibility of creating an email drop box to collect questions from students, teachers and families in the broader community. To develop a frequently asked questions document to share with our school communities. The fourth goal. The Richmond School District will communicate effectively among students, families, staff and partner groups about implementation of the policy. And our progress here, we have, there have been a great number of objectives for this goal area and some highlights include a community, developing a communication plan. The SOGI newsletter entitled Ask the Kids was published four times this year, focusing on a variety of topics designed to support staff and their work through a SOGI lens. The newsletters have provided a summary of the work of the advisory committee and have focused on ensuring all staff have direct access to the policy, the regulations and the guidelines. Describing the history of and the rationale for the policy, providing tips from our students and accessing links to resources and highlighting SOGI related work at schools around the district. Also ongoing, there is subcommittee work with the city of Richmond to create a, a youth pride event in the city. And in addition, the district coordinator and teacher consultant who work in this area are liaising with the district's equity and inclusion staff to develop our restorative practices framework for schools. I can't say enough about the excellent work that those two individuals take on. So thank you. Director Joe Hall.
Thank you very much, Marie. So we just want to conclude and, you know, thank all members of our advisory committee and like we mentioned during this presentation that there's a lot of work that's happening, not just by members within that committee, but also leads at all of our schools and just appreciate the ongoing commitment and work to implementing the SOGI policy. And with that, we'll just turn Nixon, I'll just pass it back to you to see if there's any questions or comments.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, both of you for that report. Debbie, trustee Tavlatney, go ahead.
Yes, well, I think it's been four years since we implemented that policy and and the advisory committee's done some fantastic work and very appreciative of it. Now, I'm really happy to hear that the the rainbow crosswalks are going ahead for schools because that's, we did hear at council board and from schools that, that they really wanted to, to have. There were a few schools that really wanted to, to have a rainbow crosswalk. So that's great that we found a way to, you know, look at, at how to, how to you know, to analyze and, and provide those crosswalks to schools and and help them get installed. And then also just, I heard you mention a youth pride event for the district. What, what would that? I'm, I'm just curious what that would look like. Are there any thoughts on that?
I think I could answer that one. I think there was a possibility of a graduation event. Yeah. So that, that was, that was something that was, was being discussed and no, they haven't completely decided on next steps, but that was a very much a possibility.
Sounds like a great idea. Also, I think, Mr. Joe Hall, you're going to speak about maybe the school districts participated in, in the um, speak about maybe the um, school districts participated in in the pride parade as well.
Yes, thank you, trustee Tobalney. Yes, um, we were on a bit of a waitlist and did get official word uh last week that we'd be able to participate as a SD thirty-eight contingent. Um, so we are um looking forward to that and that has been shared with uh uh students, staff, um, the board, as well as our um, our DPA um colleagues as well.
Looking forward to going back to that live event. It could be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Larson, you're next.
Thank you. Um, the work that's been done on this um committee is just, has been amazing. It it reminds me you have that goal. And it seemed to take a while at first, like, oh, this is slow or should we be going quicker? Uh, but you can't, you have to take every little piece and build on those little pieces that make up that goal. And that's happening. Um, to to listen and to have the students there telling uh, the committee what they need, what they want, what they feel safe with, and the listening that's taking place. And then they the 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 subcommittees and the the conversations, it's been just, i- it's been so fulsome. It's it's really impressive. And and you can see the difference that hap- that's happening, the the gender neutral washrooms. It's not just a case of putting a sign up. It, we have to look at everything and it's, it's been um, an amazing experience. I'm really proud of of how the whole committee's been set up and um, the subcommittee work has been really quite something. So, thank you to everybody.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Trustee Sergeant.
Well, um, you know, thank you very much for the work and the report. Um, I have been part of um provincial discussions, so I apologize if it's gets bigger, but um, you know, we had a lot of discussion about, okay, a sidewalk, now what? Um, and I put it that way in in hopes that the discussion about having a sidewalk goes much deeper than um, especially with the community. I think sidewalks say something for sure, but it's what do you do after you have the sidewalk? Especially with the broader community. And I think about all the the new kindergartens coming and new families coming. And I think it's just such ongoing work. So I'd be interested in hearing from you. Um, you know, what, what, how do you have those deeper discussions along with while you're painting it? Uh, and then just broadening the community, I'd be really interested to hear, I do think we need, still need a lot of work uh to be done in our community, our broader community. So any work with this city would be fantastic. Um, and then I I think about why this policy, why we created the policy and it was to the students that came before us at the board meeting. And I'd really, I know you have asked the kids in the committee, but I'd really be interested in a deep dive con- conversation, a really safe place, you know, what do they think, how we're doing? Um, you know, I think we've made big strides, but I still think there's lots of work to be done. And it'd be really cool, even if it was some of the same um students or, yeah. I'd I'd really be interested to see after four years what what they think. How are we doing? You know, is Richmond considered a safer place now? Um, you know, I I hope it is, you know, but I really think that we can move a little bit further. So interested to see what what is in the package along with the sidewalk and um any ideas of of how we can broaden that discussion with the community. And Marie, is this your last one? I just wanted to say thank you so much for your contribution to our district in so many avenues. And maybe Sandra was gonna say that, but just seeing your face, um, I just really am appreciative of all your heartfelt work and contribution to kids. Thank you.
Just the sorry, um, yes, uh, I think um, we'd like to echo that. Um, Ms. Rockliff, Marie, glad that you're you're here tonight. Come to uh the cusp of uh moving into a well-deserved retirement. I want to uh thank you for presenting uh this final, offering this final um part of the report to the board. Uh, we will all miss your expertise um and your a care and compassion in um nurturing so many of the other programs and services uh that benefit our students' learning and wellbeing. And you've been involved with 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 many of those and grown many of those those programs to what they are now. And so, uh, please accept our thanks, uh, since you are here tonight, we're able to do that uh as in person as as we are this evening. Uh, we wish you, we wish you every good thing as you uh move into a a new phase of your life. And thank you to you both for the report. Um, it has been, as others have mentioned, um, four years since uh passing of our policy, SOGI policy. Uh, we are well on the way um and pursuing the goals and the vision uh that are embedded into that policy. And it's in very large part thanks to the advisory committee and that that those who have been ma- ma- participating on that committee um across our district for the past four years and are going to be continuing that work. Um, as others have alluded to, much done and much more to do. And we are on a good path. So uh, thank you again for the report to everyone involved. Final comments. So uh, thank so much. We are going to move to our next report, which is a report on annual charitable donations. There's a report from Assistant Secretary Treasurer, and I'm just looking for, there you are, Ms. Foo. Welcome and uh thank you for the report. Would you like to highlight anything before we move to questions or comments?
Yes, good evening. Um, I'm pleased to present the twenty twenty-one report on charitable donations, which is on page thirty-eight to forty of the board package. I like to highlight that this, the twenty twenty-one year is was also a very robust year for donations for the Richmond School District. Uh, we have received a total of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents in donations, which is um the second highest we've had in the history of the school district. Last year was much higher. Uh, and of that, uh, the majority of it was cash donation uh being donated on behalf of donors specifically to the various schools of their choice and the programs in which they personally feel that they, their donation will benefit. Uh, we also have a little less than twenty thousand dollars in donation in kind. Uh, compared to last year, these are more regular donations that the school district will receive in terms of in kind donations, which are tangible assets. They are more in line with a so-called regular school year where it is donation of resources, whiteboards and vehicles for our automotive um program. Last year, we got substantially more donation in kind, mainly relating to PPE, mass uh disposable mass, reusable mass from uh major um corporations that helped us through our COVID period. So I am um open to any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from trustees? Trustee Goldstein?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Marie. I just, um, a question about donations to schools. Would you say most of the donations are to the school or to a particular program?
If I may, um, the majority of it because of our module for donation, um, um, module, we actually ask them mainly to denote the school. Uh, that is a required field so that we know where to direct the money. Uh, the field for the actual program is not mandatory. So sometimes the donor will fill in the the more specific um topic or subject or program that they want, but it it was not a required field. So it is unfortunately, I cannot answer what extent it is directed to further than just the school location.
I see. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? Great. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Foo, for that report. Uh, we are always, board is always grateful uh for the generous uh contributions of our our school and wider community uh to support our students' learning and the life of our schools and activities of our schools. So appreciate the report. Thank you. We are now at item six D, and this is a childcare and early learning update report from Assistant Superintendent Archer. Welcome back. Uh, would you like to speak to your report before we move to questions?
Uh, yes, please briefly. And uh, it's a shared report with Executive Director um Frank Guyer, and so he'll, he'll do a short portion as well. Um, and this report is uh to be found on pages forty-one to forty-seven in the board package today. And um, I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity to um share some information around early learning and childcare. Um, in twenty seventeen, um, the British Columbia uh signed an agreement with the federal government to have a um multilateral early learning and childcare framework, which, as you um know, has come to fruition um effective April first of twenty twenty-two in that now the childcare has now been incorporated into the Ministry of Education and it's now the Ministry of Education and Childcare. And um, it's been, there's been a lot of work along the way in the past five years, but it's it's now in a in a very different place and a place of learning in terms of how how we will um work together in a continuum uh of learning from ages zero to to eight. Um, with regards to early learning programs in Richmond, we have a variety of early learning programs and probably the most well-known one and the one that's been around the longest, it's actually over ten years, is um, are the Strong Start Programs. And there are five Strong Start Programs at at our elementary schools. Um, and we also have one early learning center that's housed currently this year at Curry Elementary, where we offer shared programs in conjunction with United Way and Touched On Family Services, Dakota Literacy Solutions and um to to name a few. We also run other early learning programs and learning opportunities for our educators, um, one being Changing Results for Young Children. Um, this IPALS program, which is a federally funded project, is designed specifically for families who are new immigrants to Canada to be able to um, help their orientation and uh feel more welcome in our country. And also, we have a new project starting uh next year called Strengthening Early Years to Kindergarten Transitions, SEY two KT, and try to say that very quickly. Um, and it's a, it's designed to be a collaborative project and will include a variety of schools and community agencies. Uh, and it's designed specifically to support a particular community within a larger community. And so it will be housed mainly out of McNeely Elementary, but incorporate the Mitchell Community, Canby Community, Hamilton, Hamilton Community, et cetera. Um, so that we're very excited about that new project happening. The other thing that the ministry's been doing over the past few years is um operating pilot programs. These pilot transition programs are intended to develop our understanding of governance and operations of childcare within the education system. And we are learning um as we move forward and and um begin to incorporate childcare more within our um K to twelve system, that childcare and childcare licensing and childcare requirements are considerably different from what it is that um we do within our K to twelve system. So there is there's a lot of real learning going on and that is the intention of having these pilot programs is to learn in terms of how we are able to move forward in a more effective and cohesive manner. The pilot project that we have in particular that was mentioned um earlier uh is just before, the Just Before Pro- Program began um this year at Lee Elementary. And um, it was part of um a small group of Just Before Pilot Projects across the the province. Uh, for next year across the province, there will be twenty-seven school districts participating in the Just Before Childcare Program. And just as the name says, it's specifically for children who are four years old or in the year just before entering kindergarten. Um, and because preschool is considered a form of childcare, we we have done a great deal of learning in terms of going through the childcare licensing process. And I have to also um express my deep gratitude to um Mr. Guyer and um Joseph Balderson, who have really helped me navigate the licensing um part of the project, but um on the facility side of things. And huge thank you as well to um Marie Tom, our early learning um teacher consultant, and Brooke Douglas, our our district administrator, who've also done a tremendous amount of work in terms of the, on the learning educational side of things as regards to the the licensing and getting things up and under operation. Um, and as was mentioned in the executive report earlier, that we've already um participated in a survey, a provincial survey around this uh Just Before Programs. And that's how we know that the families are very appreciative and supportive of the kind of learning that's happening at the Just Before Site. So the exciting news is that we will have not only one Just Before Site at the elementary, but we will actually have two next year. So there'll be one at Lee and the other one will be at Grower, so that we um will be able to service even more families going forward. As mentioned previously by Mr. Guyer, um, we have made a revision to the the community use of district facilities, policy eight oh four point one. And in particular, that was a requirement that came from the Ministry of Education that we needed to update our our policies with regards to childcare and early learning and 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 the particular focus of that language is and contained in the report that the board supports using district facilities to enhance access to licensed childcare that practices the guiding principles of early learning, equity, inclusivity, indigenous reconciliation and advances a more holistic system of education. So we're really excited about the the existing early learning and the the future of early learning and and childcare. And I'm going to turn it over now to um Mr. Guyer, who is going to just to speak to the childcare programs that we have had in operation on our school properties for a number of years. And it connects to what he was referring to in his strategic plan update. Over to you, Mr. Guyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Archer. So uh, yeah, so currently we were pleased to say that we've been able to maintain thirty-eight privately-run childcares uh in thirty of our facilities uh over the past few years. Uh, it's it's been a very fluid program over the years where there's been a lot of moves, uh, but we've been able to sustain uh locations uh for quite some time. So uh, as as uh listed in the report, we have five daycare operations, which is basically uh preschool preschool-aged children that are in care during school hours. Uh, we have three preschools. Uh, three combination daycare, preschool or before and after-school care uh operations, uh four daycare or combination daycare and before and after-school care programs. And we have twenty-three before and after-school care programs. So that's basically for students uh that uh can't be picked up from their uh by their parents uh after school's out. And these typically operate out of our multipurpose rooms as a uh a joint use, which is something that we did discuss or did, I did mention at our uh in the sustain or in the strategic plan uh update. Um, these businesses are on a year-to-year license basis to occupy rooms. So and uh right now, there are, there are seven elementary schools with no childcare operations. And the reason we don't have them in there right now is because there's just no spaces. The the history of uh childcare uh within schools, a lot of people may not know this, but it was just a means that when 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 there was declining enrollment happening um throughout uh school districts in the province, this was a mechanism to be able to at least recoup the cost of oper- this was a mechanism to be able to at least recoup the cost of operating the empty rooms and with, with custodial as well as utility costs and maintenance costs. So that was the, that was kind of the genesis of childcare operating within schools. Now it's becoming a more of an integral part of the school fabric. And so what we're doing is we are working to, at, at the seven schools that, that currently don't have childcare operations. If we have some opportunities that we could look at developing something on the site that may not be within the school, we'll definitely be looking at it. But right now, the focus has been on creating new spaces where we synergize the work that we've done as part of the seismic upgrading and the temporary spaces for swing space and then reusing those paths, as I mentioned in my, in my earlier report. And as I said before, that right now, we, we have the one facility, we have the one operation at Tate that's actually part of that list I just gave. And then coming in September will be the Tomsett Childcare Center that's going to be operated by the YMCA of Greater Vancouver. And then we're, we are working on the new facilities, the new standalone facilities at Minola St. Maple Lane Elementary. And my report contains a comprehensive list of all the, of all of our childcare operators and which rooms they occupy and what kind of programs that they currently offer. And with that, I believe that concludes our report and open up to any questions.
Thank you both. I see one hand, Trustee Goldstein.
Yeah, thanks for that. Wow. The, now that the Ministry of Education has authorized school districts to provide daycare, is there like a backburner goal or do we have, feel any kind of social obligation to satisfy the daycare needs of our community, being Richmond, just as we satisfy the K to twelve needs? I know right now it's, it's too big a step, but longer term, would this kind of be the direction that you think we're heading? And would space in the district itself would be wanting, of course, but in terms of long-term, would this be like a reasonable direction, do you see?
I, would, would, would you like to speak, Superintendent Robinson? I just see your hand go up, or would you like me to answer or respond?
Why don't you go ahead? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Archer, and I can add to it. Thank you.
So thank you very much for your question. I would like to say that, that it's not so much that school districts have been authorized to provide childcare. It's more that the, the Ministry of Childcare no longer is a separate ministry. It's now incorporated with the Ministry of Education. And so the, the, so for example, the private daycare or childcare facilities that Mr. Guyer was speaking to, they will, they still will operate independently. They'll still go through their licensing procedures. And so we're not actually sort of the oversight for them. But there is interest to look at how can we incorporate in a more seamless way childcare support for families within our schools. So that's why we are exploring what this looks like. So perhaps, so quite possibly in the, so the very long term, there may be more incorporation and more of a seamless continuity with regards to early learning. And so that's why this, this sort of, not so much about childcare, but also about early learning. And another one of the pilot projects, which we do not have in Richmond at this time, but some other districts do have is, and I think I have mentioned it previously, is the Seamless Daycare. And so that is where there's shared space. So within a kindergarten classroom or a grade one classroom, you have a early childhood educator that comes in early in the morning for the parents to be able to drop off their children. They finish their early morning shift, the, the kindergarten or K one class begins. And then later in the afternoon, another childcare operator educator comes in and works with the children after school. And that's all within the same shared space. So that's, that's quite a different model from the Just Before, but it's also have, has, is having great sort of possibilities in some districts, the ones where we're piloting that.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna see if you wanted to follow up.
Yeah, thanks very much. You know, I think, Trustee Goldstein, you, you ask a good question. I think it's somewhat philosophical in nature. Should school districts be taking this on? And I think this is a question that's really being in its very early stages of discussion with the ministry right now. I don't think any firm decisions have been made. I think there is a lot of work to be done and a lot of discussion that needs to occur between school districts and the ministry before any firm direction is set that might align with a philosophy one way or the other. So I think we're in the early days, to be honest with you.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Hey, Trustee Larson.
Hi, pardon me. Thank you. Two things. I've always been so absolutely impressed with Strong Start. Not just for the learning that, that's happening with the kids while they're there, but also for the community, the, because they have to be with a, an adult. Those adults are learning through the children in a lot of situations, I, I believe. I, I saw it happen, and it was fascinating. The other thing I was just thinking, when you were describing the Just Before, I thought, how wonderful for the kids that have birthdays in the early time of the year and can't go to school until, can't go to kindergarten until September, maybe their birthday's in January. It's an opportunity for them to start learning. And I, I, I didn't thought, think about that before, but you really brought that to my, the forefront of my mind, and I think that's wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. I really like Mr. Guyer, the, the whole list of what we're providing, because there were some changes. And I'd, I'd like to take a minute to say thank you to all the childcare providers that have been working with us before and after. And they also came through a pandemic and really helped, you know, really helped the seamlessness of keeping the kids safe. So I know it was, it was really hard for the operators as well. So I just wanted to say, you know, good on you for helping us in the big goal of keeping our kids safe and connected. So I really appreciate that. You know, it is, it is now called Ministry of Ed, Education and Childcare. And it is something that has to be teased out more, as our superintendent has said. And as a governor, I really, really think we have to be part of that discussion, too. Are we, and I know they're looking at different models, regional offices and things like that, but it, it is an arena before it gets too far down the path, where we have to make sure that everybody's, you know, following along or along with the journey. And I wouldn't want to see announcements made where we're just having to play catch-up. And think about our superintendent, who is he now going to be responsible for staffing or for making sure the outcomes of the daycares are fulfilled, et cetera? So not saying it's not a good thing to do, I'm just saying we, we all have to be at the table and sharing our concerns so that the product at the end is, is going to be really good for kids. And I really appreciate your leadership, Assistant Superintendent Archer, for, for helping in that discussion and for taking on a pilot with all the other people to just see what are those questions that we might have. But as governors, I know at the provincial table, there's questions around making sure that we all, we all know what we're supposed to be doing and what we're not supposed to be doing. With the big end in mind, if we can help, you know, experiences and journeys for kids, then that's a good thing. But let's make it just realistic and let's see if we can make it happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Sergeant. Thanks. Not seeing any other, any other hands up. Oh, Trustee Hamaguchi getting it into the wire. Go ahead. Trustee Hamaguchi, need to unmute.
I was just saying, I thought I pushed a button for my hand, but I guess it didn't work anyways. First of all, I want to thank Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Lynn Archer for all the work in, in, in the childcare area. As a childcare rep that goes to the committee meetings with the city, it's so nice that for the last few months, I can say, well, this is what's happening. We started this new program and that new program. So thank you very much for giving me a lot of good news to give back to the city. With so much talk about childcare being built into the, into the school day, continuous childcare. I guess what I'm, I, I was talking with some of the service providers, but, you know, down the road, I'm looking at, I see a lot of the QP advertising and, and, and in their material, they talk about sort of the, you know, the importance and, and the need to get childcare operating in schools. And, and I'm assuming that's partly with their staff and so forth. And yet we also have a number, a large number of independent service providers as well. Now, I know it's early and you'll be gone when this is all sorted out, but where do you see this? I don't think it'll be conflict, but the whole issue of having private providers versus unionized providers. Do you see that it's becoming an issue or that something that will resolve itself?
That's an interesting speculation, and thank you for the question. But I mean, whatever I could say would, won't necessarily, we don't know, as you said, in terms of what is coming. At this point, obviously, we, we, in Richmond, in terms of with our pilot, we have not experienced any kinds of conflict. And for example, at Lee Elementary, where we just started as of April first, the Just Before Program in the afternoon, there is an existing childcare facility that's, that's independently operated there. And, and it's not taking from the same group of children or in conflict. And, but those are, those are pieces that are part of the learning in terms of what will have to be sorted out and to be understood and developed. And, and, and that's part of the picture that Superintendent Robinson and, and Trustee Sergeant were referring to in terms of what do we learning, what, what are we going to do as a result of what we're learning? And what are some things we haven't considered? And, and so that it is very carefully managed moving forward so that we have sufficient childcare spaces for everyone, and there will still be independent operators, and there may be more in the future operating within school districts.
Hey, thank you very much.
Okay, going over to you, Trustee Tavani.
Yes, I was looking, kind of scrolling through the list of schools, and I noticed about, there's about five or six schools that do not have a program now. Is that because there's something close by that, like maybe Community Center or something else that's providing the daycare? Just kind of curious. So I would have thought most schools now had established programs, or is that because some of the schools didn't have room? I think we did have that problem.
I, I can, I can try to answer that through the chair. Yeah, so the school, yeah, so as, as I mentioned before, the schools that currently don't have childcare within, it's just that we just don't have space for it. But in, in, in many of those cases, there is, there, there are programs nearby. But as, as, as a whole, Richmond is underserved, but it's no different than any other community when it comes to, to childcare. There, there's a heat map that the city puts out. And, you know, where, where we try, where, where we can place. And one of the things that we, I just want to make, make clear is that when we're, when we're placing childcare operators in our facilities now, we want to make sure that they can be there for at least four or five years, so they can, you know, establish a foundation and that we're not going to pull the rug out from under them within the first year. And one of the issues with that, that we had before is we were placing childcare operators in a facility, and then a year later, we would move them because of growth in the area. Well, now that we've synergized the long-range facilities plan and enrollment projections with other aspects of facility utilization, including childcare, we're being much more methodical. And where we don't have, and as I mentioned before, where we currently don't have childcare operations, we're looking at different avenues to be able to create those opportunities over the next few years. Does that kind of answer the question?
Does. Thank you.
And I might just add that of the, the schools that were identified as not having childcares is absolutely correct. I support five of them, and they don't have the space, as Executive Director Guyer has mentioned. And I will say that at Hamilton, because you asked a question about proximity, at Hamilton, the school and the community center are essentially one big building. And, and there is a childcare facility within the community center there.
Yeah, and I do believe Blair is similar.
Hey, any other comments? Thanks again to you both for the report, for your dedicated work in this area. It's multifaceted, a lot of moving parts. It takes, I know, a lot of, a lot of coordination and patience, planning and working, working with our partners, our community and ministry partners as well. I just wanted to also acknowledge, we did say thank you at the beginning of the meeting, but acknowledge Assistant Superintendent Archer, thank you for presenting this final report, your final report to the Board of Education. And just to say again that we will, we will greatly miss your leadership in this and many other areas that you have worked on for us. So thanks again. I have just also been reminded that we are two hours into this meeting, and it might be time for us to take a quick bio break. So I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute break before we come back for our other business that's on the agenda here. Thanks. We'll see you in a few minutes. Could I invite trustees to turn their um cameras on if they're back? Then we'll know if we're ready to start. Well, I think we should continue. Uh so we're going to move uh now to uh item six E, uh which is still part of our business arising. And it's the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, five-year capital plan. And if it feels like we've just been talking about capital plans, because we we were, we just received our capital response that are not that long ago. Uh it's now time for us to look, look again to the future and to what we see uh that we'd like to be doing uh in the coming year. So we have a report here from Executive Director, Mr. Frank Geyer. And wondering if you would like to comment on your report, Mr. Geyer, before we move to the recommendation?
Thank you, ma'am chair. So uh once again, good evening, everybody. You're probably sick of seeing me by now, but I'm still here. Uh so you have before you a report and summary of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Richmond's Board of Education five-year capital plan. Um our plan contains forty-six projects, uh sorry, forty-four projects this year eligible for funding out of various ministry programs. So we have twenty-four projects in the seismic mitigation program. We have five in the school expansion program. Five in the school enhancement program, three projects in the carbon neutral capital program. Uh three projects in the playground equipment program and four projects in the building envelope program. Uh I just want to point out that uh the report that uh was submitted earlier that's been subsequently replaced included two uh bus replacements, but we were advised uh yesterday, early afternoon by the ministry that the two buses in question that we were looking to replace were not eligible for replacement. So that's why we had to make an adjustment to uh to my report and the uh the summaries attached. So in addition to the forty-six projects, uh there is one schools, there's one site acquisition um requested in our plan for the future city center elementary school. Uh that's identified in our eligible school site proposal, which is the report that will be following this report. And all our capital plan submission totals over six hundred and twenty-five million dollars this year. Uh the due dates for submissions to the ministry are Ju- June thirtieth for the projects contained in major capital programs, which is seismic uh mitigation and the uh school expansion. Uh and September thirtieth for the minor capital programs, which is the school enhancement programs, uh carbon neutral capital, uh bus program uh and playground replacement. As well as for the building envelope programs. The reason that we're bringing these projects forward at this time rather than waiting until September is that we're basically, we're ready, we've done. Uh we've got all our reports done, all of our costing is done. And to be honest, we just don't want the board to have to go through this more than once a year. Uh so as per ministry instructions, uh each of these submissions will require a separate board adoption and resolution. Which is different from previous years, but it's it's the same as what we had to do last year. That's why the program has to be broken up. Um all projects contained in the capital plan are consistent with uh and prior and prioritized as per the district long range facilities plan. With input and guidance from the Ministry of Education Capital Management Branch that we work very, very closely with when it comes to developing our capital plan. So it's realistic. And uh so we're not making unrealistic uh requests that uh without that that blindsides the ministry. Uh so we expect to hear back from the ministry sometime in early two thousand twenty-three as to which projects will be supported or approved for implementation in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year. So the recommended action tonight is that the board approve the capital plan as presented. I can answer any questions you may have pertaining to the projects or the plan at this time. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Perhaps we'll see if there are questions about anything in your report and then we'll take the resolutions one at a time and have discussion on each of the each of those. But any, any questions? Okay, the first resolution is on page fifty-two of your agenda package. I'll just read it out in accordance with provisions under section one four two. Section four of the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-Eight Richmond hereby approves the proposed five-year capital plan. Major capital for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, as provided on the five-year capital plan summary, major capital for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, submitted to the Ministry of Education. And the uh five-year capital plan, major capital summary is found on page fifty-three and fifty-four. Is there a mover for that? Trustee Sergeant, thanks. Seconded trustee to blot any any discussion? Okay, thank you. We'll call the question. All those in favor of that motion? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. I'm going to look for the next one, page fifty-five. In accordance with provisions under section one four two, the section for the school act, the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-Eight Richmond hereby approves the minor proposed minor capital plan for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, as provided on the minor capital plan summary submitted to the Ministry of Education. And that plan is found on the following two pages, page fifty-six and fifty-seven. Is there a mover? Trustee Goldstein, thank you. Secondary trustee Yamaguchi, any discussion? Okay, calling the question, those in favor. Any opposed? That is also carried unanimously. Thank you. And the third resolution on page fifty-seven. Now, the Board of Education Richmond approves the proposed building envelope program capital plan for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, as provided on the building envelope program capital plan summary submitted to the Ministry of Education. And you'll find that on the following page. A mover for this motion? Uh trustee Larson, thank you. Seconded by trustee to blot me. Any discussion? We'll call the question, those in favor. And that is also carried unanimously. We'll move then uh to our next item, as mentioned by Mr. Geyer, the eligible school site proposal. Again, a recommendation here, anything you'd like to say about this report, Mr. Guy?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. I'd like to speak to the report. Uh so you have before you a report regarding the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three eligible school site proposal. The resolution of which uh is to be adopted annually by the Richmond Board of Education and submitted to the Ministry of Education along with its capital plan. Um the purpose of the E S S P is to identify new school sites required by the board over the long term based on the district long range facilities plan and update enrollment projections. And the proposal has been drafted in consultation with the City of Richmond, Metro Vancouver Regional District and developer stakeholders. Current projections show over sixteen thousand seven hundred new residential units will be developed in the City of Richmond over the next ten years. Which planning staff estimate will yield almost seventeen hundred students. These projections are consistent with the L R F P and the facilities expansion strategy contained within to address the growth in the city center area and Hamilton area through a series of additions to existing elementary schools, construction of a new school at Dover Park and eventually a new school site in city center to serve long-term growth beyond two thousand thirty-three. The S S P includes the future acquisition of the the future acquisition of a city center elementary school site generally located in the vicinity of Landstown Shopping Center and estimated current cost of seventy-five million dollars. The timing of development at Landstown Center and its surrounding lands in the city centers plan to be phased in over the next fifteen to twenty years. Once the resolution contained in this report is approved by the board, certified copy will be provided to the City of Richmond and Metro Vancouver Regional District for acceptance pursuant to the school site acquisition provisions of the Local Government Act. The eligible school site requirements must also be included in the district five-year capital plan submission to the Ministry of Education. Um there are no changes to the future school site requirements included in the proposed uh two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three E S P from the previous year's E S P resolution and capital plan submission. The school site acquisition charge bylaw will need to be reviewed in winter two thousand twenty-two after the or after the board resolution on the E S S P is accepted by the city and the ministry. So we'll be submitting the E S S P as long as the board approves uh approves the motion tonight or adopts the uh resolution, we'll be passing this on to the city and ministry for their approval. Um the key values in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three E S S P are similar to last year's uh proposal. And are thus not likely to result in an increase in the per unit school site acquisition charge rates paid by developers for new residential development based on the formulas and maximums set through the provincial school site acquisition regulations. So the recommended action tonight is that the board adopt the E S S P resolution as presented. And uh if you have any questions, I can stab at answering them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh trustee Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you uh for explaining all that. This resolution is is not, the 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 board is not directing staff in this resolution. The board is confirming information that staff has researched and uncovered. So it seems, I'm just trying to understand why this requires a board resolution, not just a submission of staff reports.
Uh I can answer that through the chair. The this is actually, it's actually a provincial requirement uh that is done this way. Um so it's not, it's not up to staff as to whether or not we do it or not. If we're, if we're a school district that has a potential school site acquisition in mind, we were required to provide this resolution uh to the ministry and to uh and to the stakeholders that we listed. Uh we have to do that on an annual basis. We hadn't done that for a number of years and we started it up two years ago. Uh because that gives us the mechanism necessary to generate revenue. Without this, without that board resolution, uh we wouldn't be able to generate revenue from uh developers uh towards acquiring a school site.
I see. I see. Okay, thank you, Mr. Guy.
Hey, thank you. Any further questions from trustees? Okay, so the uh the resolution is on page sixty-one. And the what we're going to do is read the recommendation. Um and I've been advised that it's the the um recommendation that could come as a motion, um that we wouldn't need to read the entire uh the entire resolution. So I'm going to propose, see if there would be someone willing to move this motion that the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty-Eight Richmond approve the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three eligible school site proposal through adoption of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three E S S P resolution as attached on uh on page sixty-one. So is there a mover for that? Uh trustee to blot me. Thank you. Secondary. Uh trustee Goldstein, thank you. Any further discussion? Trustee Goldstein?
Yeah, so I I as a motion, I mean, um I would change approve to approves.
Okay. Any? Anyone disagree with that? We can certainly do that. If there's no compelling reason why not. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, calling the question then. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Geyer and to your team. Uh it's a for the work you've put into putting this together. And we appreciate that we will you know, have this as a piece to the puzzle of uh acquiring what we need in the future. And do everything we can and take advantage of of all the sources of revenue that we have available to us. So thank you. Uh we are finished business arising now and there's no new business on the agenda. So we are at our second uh question period. I'm going to check to see if there are any questions from attendees or any questions that have come in through our email. I'm not seeing any hands from those uh on the call tonight. Superintendent?
A chairperson, there is one uh set of questions uh that was submitted via the uh board email address, so I'm pleased to respond to that. So um these are a set of questions from one person regarding the S O G report presented earlier. Um and these questions are from a person identifying himself as Joe Billings, uh who is uh a parent in our school district. So Mr. Billings uh begins his questions by stating that results from the survey done by Bacau Consulting last year were released this month. Among Richmond High Schoolers, seven point seven percent of the student population reported being a gender other than cisgender girls and cisgender boys, i.e. trans. being a gender other than cisgender girls and cisgender boys, i.e. trans and non binary. His comment is that this rate of seven point seven percent is a staggering twenty two times the national rate reported in the census. And the rates for parents and teachers are not nearly so high. So he then asks four questions. The first being, are you concerned about this rate? So the first thing I would say is that the statistic of seven point seven percent that has been quoted by Mr. Billings actually represents the percentage of those who responded to the survey, not the percentage of students in the school district. So in actual fact, this percentage is consistent with those reported in other jurisdictions. I think more importantly, though, the survey data has been used to improve the experience of people in our school district who experience marginalization, not to impact rates of self identification one way or the other. Second question, do you know how many children have been socially transitioned in the school? So we don't keep data on this as our goal is certainly not to impact the number of students who may or may not transition. I would want to say, however, that adolescents are on a journey of discovery, who they are and how they fit into the world. We don't keep track of children who are transitioning. We focus some on ensuring good connections with all students. And through the SOG policy, we pay particular attention to transitioning and students who present as queer. Any medical diagnosis is the responsibility of medical personnel and would not be within the realm of the school district. Third question, do you believe the district may be miseducating youth? So the district provides support and education to students, but does not advise them as to their identity decisions or impart our own personal values on students' decisions or life choices. The approach taken in our district is consistent with what is supported by the Ministry of Education and childcare and is done in a way that is consistent with board policy one oh six. Our focus as a district, however, is to emphasize connection and belonging amongst all of our students. We recognize that students have many different experiences based on their complex identities. And that would be informed by a number of factors. And we have a responsibility to recognize how students are seeing themselves within our local community and beyond, working to ensure that they're supported, valued, and included in all classroom and school settings. And the final question, do you think the district may be leading to the misdiagnosis of girls with autism? So as I said, we neither discourage nor we neither encourage nor discourage students identities. We simply accept them as they present themselves to us. As I said earlier, any medical diagnosis would be the responsibility of medical personnel, not the school district. Chairperson, I trust that that answers those questions. And I don't believe there are any further questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Superintendent Robinson. I'm just going to check again for those I see as attendees tonight to see if there are any other questions. And I am not seeing any. So we come to item nine, our standing committee reports. And I will go in order here audit committee trustee Eagles team.
Thank you, madam chair. The next meeting is scheduled for this fall, September 12th, Monday. And the format of the meeting, as I guess for all the meetings, will be determined over the summertime will be announced.
Thank you. Education Committee trustee Larson.
I have the phone. I don't know. Bear with me. Sorry. There's no information to report and I will, where's my paper? I believe it's September twenty I don't know where mine is. I think it's September.
Next meeting I've got here, September fourteenth Wednesday.
Okay, sir. I apologize.
Thank you. There are a lot of, lot of pieces of paper. We often have floating around in small, small home office areas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Facilities and Building Committee trustee Yamaguchi.
Thank you. For information minutes of the meeting held May fourth are attached to your package. Meeting was held on June first. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September the seventh at four thirty PM. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Finance and Legal Committee trustee sergeant.
Thank you very much, Chair. The our last meeting was held on June fifteenth. And our next meeting is Wednesday, September fourteenth at ten o'clock. And there are minutes of our May eighteenth meeting attached of the package. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Committee trustee to blot me.
Yes, policy committee. Minutes of the meeting held May sixteenth are attached. A meeting was held on June twentieth. And the next meeting scheduled is scheduled for Monday, September nineteenth, eleven AM.
There is me dropping something. Thank you. So we are at item ten correspondence. We have no correspondence on the board package today. Board committee reports. Also, we don't have any reports and we have deferred to council board setting a council board meeting date at this point. And that is all we have looking for a motion to adjourn. Trustee Sergeant, seconded trustee Yamaguchi. Call question, all in favor of adjournment. Thank you very much. And just to say once again, thank you to everyone for joining us this evening and wishing you all a good summer, whatever you are planning and hope it's a safe and happy one. Thank you and have a good evening.